Good afternoon and welcome to this public hearing which will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council and Chair of these committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and the Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and to provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be occasions when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on City Council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we'll hear information on legislation in the Finance and Health and Human Services Committees. Presenters this evening include, in Health and Human Services Committee, a guest presentation from the Boy Scouts, Jennifer Coma, Director of Development and Marketing, and the Chair of, what was I saying, Zurka, Zurka, thank you, Executive Director of My Project USA, and then from the Department of Development, Kim Stantz, who's a Human Services Coordinator, and from Columbus Public Health, Dr. Teresa Seelong, our Health Commissioner. And the Finance Committee will have City Treasurer's Office, Deborah Lee, our Treasurer, and from the City Auditor's Office, Robert McDaniel, Deputy Auditor, and from Finance and Management, Joe Lombardi, the Director. We have several guests that will be presenting on legislation, which I've mentioned, in Health and Human Services. So I will begin in that committee to allow our guests an opportunity to discuss their programs. So with that, I will turn it over to, our first presenter will be Jennifer Coma, and you guys can come up, and then they will be discussing a program that Councilwoman Michael Stenziano is funding to engage new Americans in scouting. And Councilmember Stenziano, would you like to provide additional comments before turning it over to the presenters? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will let the presentation begin. Very appreciative of both your collaboration and kind of stepping up as we discuss the need in parts of our community and neighborhoods that this program could help address. So look forward to the presentation and thank you both for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Tyson, and Councilman Stenziano, and everyone who's here today. I'll let Zurka begin by speaking more specifically to the need in the communities in which she's serving, and then hopefully I'll be able to address how we will serve those needs.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, both Councilmembers. I really appreciate this opportunity today. So My Project USA is a nonprofit organization, and we have been focusing on particularly curbing human trafficking, drugs, and gangs, violence, those kind of activities. And our pilot program, Pilot Neighborhood, is Wedgewood on West Side of Columbus. And that's where we have been working for one and a half year at a location, and before then, we've been serving it from other locations. And in this time, we have noticed that there are somewhere between 1,500 to 2,000 children in that particular neighborhood who are at kind of risk. We have nine to 10-year-old children who would have gun also in their hand, and there have been several incidents in that neighborhood. What we have been doing, we have been focusing on refugee community, Muslim community, and we have built a kind of space where, in last one and a half year, just very quickly, I will give some numbers, to give you an idea, we started a pantry in which we are serving 151 families, 152 families, every single Saturday. We have distributed about eight, more than 250,000 meals, hot meals and other meals in last one, two years already. 15,000 individuals have been served, 6,000 gift scores, other things have been delivered. 32,000 committee service hours have been invested in this particular community through several volunteers, and 53 youth and adults have been trained and employed through our goodwill-type store and other services. Twelve social services projects have been launched in this particular community in different ways. Last year, we invested $86,000 in just the social services provided to this particular neighborhood in different ways. So with all of that, what we have been noticing is that there is a great need of just not helping with their hunger or poverty issues, but actually employment, and also a lot of recreation is needed. With these children who are locked out of their homes most of the time, when they are out of schools, when there are no other programs, gangs are very, very tempting. So what we were looking for is to have some kind of recreational activities and programs in which we can engage them. I have secured a soccer field also to start soccer program, and then Boy Scout really comes forward and to bring that kind of programs that we needed. And we are already engaging Somali youth who are educated, who are in the college right now, and that's going to be a really good, successful program.
Thank you. This is, I guess, where the Boy Scouts comes in, in that what better way to introduce our new American population, our refugees and immigrants, to Columbus and Central Ohio than through none other than probably one of the most American institutions that you have, and that being the Boy Scouts? And so our goal is to reach out to some of our most at-risk youth in these communities and provide them the traditional scouting program. We do this through what's called our Scout Reach Program, which basically means scouting is offered to every child and family where financial barriers should never come in the way from their experience in scouting. And that's really important in the fact that we're able to provide these youth programs, community service opportunities, positive adult mentorship, and activities that will engage them in a positive manner so that they can learn character development and leadership skills. And what makes our situation unique is that we're able to do this in what we consider our classroom in the woods, which is our camps. And few opportunities are available to kids from the Hilltop and the West Side of Columbus to be able to have these experiences if it weren't for a partnership between My Project USA and the Boy Scouts. So we seek your support. We appreciate it. I know the youth and families of these communities do. We'll be able to provide a full scouting program with stipend program leaders where parental involvement is otherwise a struggle at no cost to these families.
Thank you, Jennifer, for coming and certainly sharing the program of the Boy Scouts. And I certainly had the opportunity to meet with you last week for you to share a little bit more about the work and the number of children that this program will serve. And to you, Zurka, thank you for your work that you've been doing on the west side of our, west side of our city. I'm really pleased, as someone who is also focusing on access to food, that you just mentioned that you're able to serve between 151, 152 families' meals, and just really appreciate you and your organization ensuring that everyone, you know, has a, will be able to have a meal to eat. So thank you for your work in the community. I also want to thank my colleague, this legislation is $25,000 that will certainly work with a number of young people, but certainly thank my colleague, Councilwoman Michael Stenziano, for leading this effort and putting dollars behind this effort. And so thank you to Michael, my colleague, Councilmember Stenziano, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the credit actually goes to Zurka and Jen. As I think you can appreciate, we often find ourselves having lots of conversations out in the community, hearing about needs and kind of being able to help connect the dots. And this was a situation where I'd been out meeting with some of the My Project USA initiatives. They participated in the MLK March, and then Jen and I were out at a camp and talking about kind of their desire to work more closely in our New Americans Initiative, and it kind of just came to fruition that way. And so really looking forward to your all's partnership and continuing to be supportive. You know, it's that community, particularly the amount of youth, that are looking for programming, looking for additional opportunities to engage in the programming that the Boy Scouts have, I think is truly going to be a win-win-win for the city. So appreciate your support, Madam Chair, and our colleagues, and again, thank you both for taking the time and your leadership on this issue.
Thanks again for coming down, and it's a great collaboration between organizations, and look forward to coming out and seeing the Boy Scouts and working with My Project USA. Congratulations. I will look forward to this being on the council agenda either next, either this Monday or the following Monday.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Kim Stantz from the Department of Development, who will also be calling up presenters to provide information on programs that City Council will be supporting. Specifically, these are programs that I am funding because of the significant impact of their services to our community. Kim, I will now turn the hearing over to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Council President Pro Tem Tyson and Councilmember Stenziano, I'm sitting in the chair for Director Shoney, and it's all my pleasure. So for your consideration, we have two pieces of legislation. The first is with Hands-on Central Ohio. It's ordinance number 1525-2017. This is to approve funding request and also to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $100,000 for Hands-on Central Ohio to provide mobile phone-based emergency food scheduling services to the residents of Columbus. And in order to explain that further and give a little bit more background, Tamela Collins can go ahead and come up. She is the Senior Director of Advancement for Hands-on Central Ohio.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson and Councilman Stenziano, and other attendees here today. First of all, we'd like to thank you for your support of Hands-on Central Ohio in 2016. The $100,000 in support that you were able to provide was necessary to sustain mobile phone-based and web-chat emergency food access service to Linden, Franklinton, the Hilltop, and South Side residents of Columbus. Because of your continued partnership with us and investments in this service, food security in Columbus neighborhoods is much stronger. Results of our work together in 2016 are even more impressive than the year before. Over 6,000 Columbus households were connected to more than 72,000 meals at food pantries in Linden, Franklinton, Hilltop, and the South Side. The service continued to grow, its adoption of residents seeking emergency food in these neighborhoods from 40% in 2015 to 46% in 2016. The number of all Columbus residents assessing emergency food using this service increased from 20% in 2015 to 28% by the end of 2016. In addition, your innovation leadership on food security has attracted additional support to expand access to the service. AT&amp;T provided a grant to expand service from Columbus to Westerville in the winter of 2016. Ingram White Council Foundation provided a grant to expand this service to help close the meal gap in the Columbus Southeast and Far East neighborhoods in the spring of this We have also redesigned our website landing page in order to provide what we call food chat or web chat, emergency food scheduling as a central feature. So we definitely want to thank you for your continued support for mobile food-based texting and web chat, emergency food access. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, for coming down, and please tell Ernest Perry that we certainly have appreciated his leadership in terms of, he's the one that only designed the mobile phone-based emergency food access and scheduling, so just really appreciate working with him on the pilot program, and it's certainly really great to hear that now a number of other companies, one, have also invested in it because we certainly know that there were other needs within, within Central Ohio that required this particular scheduling service. And so it's great to hear that we're now going to be in the west, in the West Side area with AT&amp;T, but then also in Southeast and Far East, because I know that when having conversations with Mr. Perry, he was certainly mentioning there was a greater need in those other areas. And so obviously, our dollars, our initial investment has leveraged other dollars to be able to ensure that more people have access to food, emergency food. And so just appreciate the leadership of him and also the organization, and also to reach out to other organizations to be able to provide extra food to individuals. I know the areas that we're going to continue to fund are the areas that we're focusing on with our infant mortality. These are some of the neighborhoods that have high infant mortality, and we want to make sure that the individuals from those neighborhoods have access to food. And so just appreciate the work. This is important to me, again, and Dr. Long's in the room, knowing that this is, this is a, you know, the key components of our food plan to make sure that people have access to healthy, local, affordable food. And so, again, thank you for coming down, and again, this particular legislation is $100,000 to continue to support individuals having access to food. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the second piece of legislation that we have for your consideration is 1533-2017, and both of these pieces are scheduled to be on the June 19 council agenda. This particular piece is for a funding request from New Directions Career Center to appropriate and to expend $36,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund, and this is to provide services to empower women in transition to achieve self-sufficiency. And to give us a little more background on that is Caroline Wolliver with New Directions Career Center. She's the Director of Outreach and Program Management.
First of all, thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, as well as all other attendees and councilmen here and councilwomen. As it was just introduced, I actually am here instead of our Executive Director, Linda Warden, whose husband had emergency back surgery, and so she apologizes she couldn't be here, but I'm very happy to take her place. So again, my name is Caroline Wolliver, and I'm serving as Director of Outreach and Program Management at New Directions Career Center. It is the mission of New Directions to empower women in transition to achieve and maintain self-sufficiency, and we provide our services through holistic career counseling and career development services that help support women to find who they are, what they want, define their own personal definitions of success, and overcome barriers towards meaningful employment. It has been our pleasure that, over our 37-year history, the majority of the time we have been receiving city funding for our programming, and over 37 years, we have celebrated the 36, excuse me, 65,000 lives of women that we have touched in Central Ohio. We are here because despite educational and employment gains in Central Ohio, women continue to earn less than men, as well as have less economic stability. In addition to the economic piece, we also have research that proves that women experience lower levels of confidence, known as the confidence gap, compared to their male counterparts. This lack of confidence can impact one's ability to go after career risks, engage in self-promotion, explore careers that they might have otherwise found incredibly fulfilling, and pursue additional leadership roles, and that overall can impact women's economic stability and earning potential. Additionally, women are often overloaded, as I'm sure many of us here know today, that not only are you overloaded in your employment arena, but oftentimes at home as well, and not given credit or validation for that unpaid work that so many women do at home, as well as the paid work that they do in their employment arena. Many other anti-poverty and job readiness programs really only scratch the surface of what's really needed to bring individuals out of poverty towards meaningful employment, which oftentimes then leaves people in that feeling of constant generational poverty and unable to get out of that cycle. Living in poverty oftentimes means living with chronic scarcity, whether that be chronic scarcity of time, scarcity of money, of resources, of support, and that chronic scarcity not only has individuals feeling toxic stress that comes along with that, that makes it difficult to problem-solve and have long-term thinking, as well as the overall day-to-day balance and maintenance of their, of their issues and their challenges. Our brains are literally hardwired to tunnel in when we have that type of scarcity. And so with the programming that we provide, we provide behaviorally-informed programming that accounts for all of the needs that women have, not only to maintain and achieve employment, but to also really work with them as whole people to mitigate those effects of toxic stress that comes along with that chronic scarcity. What we find is that individuals don't just need a new resume, which is oftentimes what other job readiness and career centers provide, but with working with them more as whole people to improve their mental, emotional, and physical care strategies towards overall better functioning and resiliency. With this functioning and long-term resiliency, these individuals become more competitive job candidates, more productive employees, and overall more contributing members of our community. With these types of behaviorally-informed programming that New Directions offers, we employ licensed professional counselors to really process that cognitive and emotional aspect of the job search that is so often neglected when talking about job readiness and workforce development. In 2016, we served 325 unique persons through the center's various programs and together received over 16,000 hours of service hours for the programming itself. And based on our demographics from the 2016 core program pool, 66 of our graduates first were unemployed at the time of seeking services, 66% making $20,000 or less in average annual household income, with 38% of those respondents living off less than $5,000 a year. And after graduating from our program, 71% of those actively seeking work or looking to begin an educational program after their graduation found new employment or started school. With that, we also had an increase in average hourly wage from less than $9.62 at the time of their initial orientation to $14.97 after graduating. That income differentiator of $5 per hour equals about $10,000 a year increase per individual and infuses about $3.25 million into our community. These types of reported improvements in increased work hours, as well as benefits, particularly healthcare and paid time off to handle personal and family needs, contribute to the overall well-being and stability of the family household. Graduates report higher wages that now adequately covers basic cost-of-living expenses, that they are able to afford more needed goods and services. And this speaks to the Columbus Foundation's citation that any new job contributes $100,000 to the community when one is able to have greater spending with their flexibility of income, as well as the vendors and merchants of the, of those who maybe they are purchasing In general, because our graduates are able to make positive improvements, not only with their employment and income, they're going to be more engaged employees and family members, able to provide a safer, stable environment for their families, leading to less housing insecurity, more regular nutritious meals, and more time and attention to the nurturing care needed for these healthy families. 99% of our graduates improve their ability to identify and address barriers, which leads to long-term resiliency and goal attainment. And this resiliency and goal attainment piece really does allow for that overall household financial security that can help individuals get out of generational poverty. Additionally, 95% of our graduates report an increase in self-esteem and confidence, and 96% reporting improvements in their self-promotion and assertive communication skills. So our graduates will more confidently and consistently use these effective self-promotion and communication strategies to be able to demonstrate their values to employers, gaining more meaningful employment with a greater ability to pursue opportunities for career advancement, higher wages, professional development, and leadership roles. And in closing, we have a great partnership with a tremendous amount of organizations in the community because we know that, just like our holistic nature of our work, we know that it takes a village to provide these services. And so we work collaboratively with agencies like Hands-on Central Ohio, as well as Alvis, Amethyst, Choises, Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, Dress for Success, Moms-to-Be, the Food Banks, Van Buren Shelter, to be able to not only reach the populations of individuals, but better give holistic care. And so because of our very longstanding relationship with receiving funding from the city, we're not only incredibly fortunate to be here today to ask for continued support, but are very excited to continue our, hopefully, continue our relationship with the city of Columbus of empowering women's lives. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, and certainly, I really do appreciate you giving a very thorough presentation of the work that you're doing at the New Directions Career Center. And certainly, what's important for me is that, one, is the confidence gap. I think that's really important for women, but also that, if you listen to the statistics, that 66% of the women that you're serving in the organization make less than $20,000, and of that, 38% of them make less than $5,000. And then, based upon the work that you, that your organization is doing with these, with the women in our community, and I know some men are there, but mostly women, that, that they're either going to have, they have a new employment, or they're going to school, and that their wages were $9.62, and they're now making at least $14.97. And, all right, so I appreciate the work that you're doing. This is very, very important because as we're helping women to move forward, it does other things for us, too. It, besides mentioning that families are moving from poverty, women are feeling better about themselves, but it also, as you said, allows individuals to be able to spend more money within the community, which is very helpful, but it also makes people feel good about themselves when they have an opportunity to go to school or to work. And so I thank you for that. And we also know that, I think about who is, who's being evicted from, who's also going to the shelter, are women and families. And so the more work that we can do on the front end to prevent that from happening is so important. And so I thank you for coming down. This is for, this ordinance will be for $36,000 to support women and families, families moving forward, empowering women to change their lives with holistic support and expert career guidance, and to help them explore career options, and to identify and overcome barriers to meaningful employment. So thank you very much for coming down, and please tell Linda we said hello, and look forward to passing this legislation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stantz, anything else?
No, that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to transition to the Finance Committee and ask our Treasurer, Deborah Lee, to present legislation from the City Treasurer's Office. Oh, Dr. Long's going to go next? I'm so sorry, you guys. So, I'm so used to going to Finance. Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Long. Our next president will be Dr. Teresa Long, and she will cover legislation from Columbus Public Health.
I would be very willing to yield to both the lovely people on the dais or in front of me, so, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Council President Pro Tem Tyson and Councilmember Stenziano and colleagues. I have, we have three items for your consideration tonight, for council's consideration, that we hope to bring forward over the next two council meetings. The first is a lab services contract. It's a revenue contract, ordinance 1441-2017, and this would allow the Board of Health to enter into a contract with NaphCare, N-A-P-H-Care, which, for the provision of lab testing services, not to exceed $30,000 for the year, June 1, 2017, through May 31, 2018. And this is really actually a long-term relationship that we have with doing testing for persons who are in the Franklin County Jail for sexually transmitted diseases. What has changed and why we are bringing forward this new contract is that the jail has actually changed their health services provider. So we had a need to move forward with a new contract to do that. So NaphCare is their new vendor, and they were very interested in continuing the work with us. So again, this contract will maintain a partnership with the Sheriff's Department, but it will change the actual contractor. So again, we look forward to continuing to work with them. We actually serve, these funds would provide for about 1,000 sexually transmitted infection tests. That is actually about the number that we do every year, and it's actually a very high positivity rate. At 14%, of all persons tested actually have a sexually transmitted infection in this population.
And Dr. Long, so do we test everyone? Are this, are only certain individuals? How does that work?
That's a really good question. We would love to test everyone, but it actually is any person who has any symptoms, any person who is deemed by the healthcare staff to be high-risk, and actually, we give them some criteria for the kinds of persons that we would deem to be in those categories. So it's really a partnership, but it is not every person who comes through the Franklin County Jail.
Thank you. And if, and as you mentioned, that there is a 14% positive rate, and then they're treated by the individuals within the Sheriff's Department, the medical, their medical team. by the individuals within the Sheriff's Department, the medical, their medical team.
Right, it's NAPH Care contractor. It's their responsibility both to do the diagnosis and the treatment. So we actually are just providing the lab testing services.
Thank you very much.
So the next item for your, your consideration is to be able to purchase what we call Crib Survival Kits from a national entity called Cribs for Kids. It's ordinance 1452-2017, and would allow, actually, my esteemed colleague from the Department of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Cribs for Kids to purchase these portable pack-and-plays along with some special items that are deemed important for safe sleep. And this would allow us, then, to draw down on that when we have the need to purchase cribs to, again, assure that families and parents and caregivers are able to sleep their infants in a safe environment. This amount of funds, which I believe, at least we believe right now, we have $47,354 we are able to put towards this, that would allow us to purchase 592 portable cribs. We also know, and that's actually taking funds from two places, both city general funds, as well as some grant funds that we have received, federal grant funds. We know that last year, we actually gave out, or distributed, I should say, 1,130 portable cribs to caregivers and families that had a need and would otherwise not have a safe place to sleep their infants. So again, we work very hard to educate all of them. No one gets a crib unless they are actually trained in how to put up the crib, as well as to take it down. So again, we are very committed to having every infant have a safe sleep here in Columbus and Franklin County. And this is a part of our city's commitment, but really a part of our community's commitment through Celebrate One, to assure that every infant has a safe sleep.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and certainly mentioning Celebrate One, our city's commitment to reducing infant mortality. And how can, can you share more information about how someone could receive a free crib?
I am so glad you asked. That's something we want to shout high and low. We actually have it on all kinds of materials. There will be a new Safe Sleep Campaign coming forward that will also tag that. But the best and easiest thing to do is for people to call 311. So again, if, people can call 614-645-3111, or simply the 311 number, and we will be connected, and actually, we will do almost anything to get someone and get that family a, a safe sleep environment for that night.
And can you just briefly share why it is important for a child to be able to sleep in a crib?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. So again, we know that unsafe sleep conditions really do lead to a risk for a sleep-related infant death. So we want every infant here in Columbus and Franklin County to sleep safely, and that means their parents and caregivers need to understand the ABCs of safe sleep, which means alone, on your back, and in an empty crib. We certainly try and share that information, but it is very hard to do that if you don't have a safe sleep environment to allow that ABC of safe sleep to actually be, to occur. So again, this is a part of the commitment that Celebrate One and our community has had to try and both have everyone appreciate, and it's all of us, whether you think there's an infant in your life or not, there probably is. So again, we want everyone to understand the ABCs of safe sleep. We have a whole initiative to train Safe Sleep ambassadors. We are actually moving forward with training city employees as Safe Sleep ambassadors, but have been working, as, as you know, Council President Protam Tyson, with church and first ladies, with many organizations, neighborhood-based, to, again, move forward the Safe Sleep, the ABCs and Safe Sleep Ambassador Program. And connected to that is, of course, making that phone call if a safe sleep, a portable crib is needed.
Thank you, Dr. Long.
And then the final item tonight is a, it's, it's actually not a new contract, but it's, again, a new name for an organization. I'm actually not sure. It seems like I should call it Precise, but I suppose if, my mother, who was quite an English editor, it looks like it should be Precis LLC. I'm not exactly sure how to call it. It is the former organization that used to be called Language Access Network. But indeed, with both the new name and a new, and a continuing need to contract, this is a contract modification, number 1495-2017, that will allow our TB clinic, the Ben Franklin Tuberculosis Clinic, to continue to effectively manage and to provide TB services. And again, in this case, allow us to provide streaming video and phone-based interpretation services. So this will allow us to modify the existing contract for additional services, and the amount of the modification is $15,000, bringing to a total through February 28th of a total of $20,000 for that contract. And as I know you are always interested, through May the 21st of 2017, we have provided 14,600, and, I'm sorry, 1,467, that would be a lot of TB clinic visits, and approximately 2,000 direct observed therapy home visits. And potentially, in the case of many of these, we actually do need video interpretation or phone interpretation services. And again, we do provide many, many languages, but we have seen an increased need both for Mandarin and Oromo, which are not commonly used by our in-person translators. So again, we have needed more video and telephonic translation services for those, those languages.
Again, the, so this, the increase, the additional dollars of modification is because we've seen an increase in use of these particular languages, but also others. Would that be correct?
Yes, actually, it's an opportunity to move funds from one place to another, honestly. So yes, there probably is an increase in the need. It may also be that we, again, are still providing similar amount of translation services, but we are able to provide more through our on-staff, either Somali or Spanish interpreter. So again, trying to fully utilize the funds. So again, we obviously do have a need, and we will continue, I believe, to have a need for many different languages through our TB program.
Thank you, Dr. Long. And now I will transition to the Finance Committee and ask Treasurer Deborah Cle to present legislation from the City Treasurer's Office. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Protam Tyson. This evening, I have two pieces of legislation. The first is ordinance 1455-2017, and it is a request to modify a contract with First Data for e-payment services for two reasons. One, our, our friends in public service are anticipating going live with an online payment portal through their licensing or their permitting software, and that's $20,000. And the, the other aspect of this that I'm very excited about is that the Treasurer's Office has, we've decided that it would be in the best interest of all of our partners in the city and our public to be able to accept those online payments on behalf of agencies that have very small and infrequent revenue streams. We've had some inquiries lately, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, the Department of Development, to see whether we can facilitate those payments. And so this is going to be our first step in doing so. As a mechanism to fund it, the, the City Treasurer's Office will charge a convenience fee of 2% on the transactions, and the city auditor has kindly permitted that we will be able to put those funds aside in a special revenue fund and use those proceeds to be able to pay for the costs of the credit card processing, both the e-payment services piece and the credit card processing, which is a companion piece of legislation that I'll speak about next.
Thank you. I was going to ask you, when I read the legislation, to give me an example, and you just did, about when you were saying which departments may sometimes need to use the, the e-payments. And so you just said the Office of Diversity. Can you kind of just give me an example when they would use something like this?
Well, they have an annual conference, and this year, because the-
Annual Small Business Conference?
The Small Business Conference. Because this year, the Treasurer's Office didn't have a facility to be able to accept those online payments for registration, they employed the use of an agent, a fiscal agent that was approved through the Treasury Investment Board and Depository Commission, and that was PMM. Henceforth, once we get this up and going, we'll be able to handle those payments for the Office of Diversity and Inclusion infrequently, I mean, once a year, but at least we'll have the ability to do so.
That will be for $28,000?
$8,000 is for the Treasurer's Office capability, and the $20,000 belongs to public service, but for the same contract with the same effort.
Thank you.
The next piece of legislation is ordinance 1551-2017, and this one is with Huntington Merchant Services. It is for $17,000 to establish the capability for the Treasurer's Office to pay the credit card processing fees. So there's two pieces of this. One, the earlier piece, which is the e-payment services, the online portal and those costs. And this is the processing fees, which include interchange fees and, and other processing costs. And so we ask that you support this ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next presenter is going to be Bob McDaniel.
Good afternoon, President Protam Tyson. The Auditor's Office has one resolution to come before you this afternoon. Resolution 0152X-2017 is the 2018 tax budget. This is an annual resolution. Passage of this resolution and the filing of this tax budget with Franklin County, Fairfield, and Delaware will entitle the city of Columbus to participate in the local government fund. This tax budget will also establish the property tax rates for the city of Columbus for calendar year 2018, and it remains the same and is unchanged. This resolution will need to go to council on June 19th and be tabled for one week pending a public hearing. On June 26th, a public hearing and passage of the resolution will ensure that the 2018 tax budget will be submitted to the counties before the deadline. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Certainly, I don't have any questions about that. I know that the property taxes are going to be the same, as you said, and no tax increase, property.
None at all.
Property tax increase. And then, certainly, and it's very important for us to participate in the local government funds, those dollars that come back to our city. I know they've decreased from the state a significant amount, maybe about 50%, but again, we certainly do appreciate being able to receive these funds and look forward to it being on the June 19th agenda to be tabled and, and hearing in passage on the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presenter is going to be the Director from Finance, Director Joel Lombardi. Good evening.
Good afternoon, President Protam Tyson. The Department of Finance and Management has seven ordinances that are up for consideration for the June 12th or 19th city council agendas. The first ordinance is 1344-2017, and this authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract through the State of Ohio Cooperative Contract Process with Vehicle Services Group DBA Rotary Lift for the purchase of a heavy-duty surface lift and heavy-duty axle jacks in the amount of $31,278.80. This piece of equipment is used by our Division of Fleet Management to lift Columbus Fire Division medic units to perform vehicle maintenance and repairs. The current lift is 17 years old and is in need of consistent maintenance, and quite frankly, we are not using it because of the stability issues that we have with such an old piece of equipment. So this lift will replace that lift, and we'll, we'll have a new lift there for Fleet Management to be able to work on the fire medics. We'll still be able to work on fire medics. We do, we do have another lift, so this is not the only one we have, yeah.
Thank you. I was, I'm sure, well, I was sure just based upon the, the management and leadership of Mr. Kelly Reagan, that I'm sure that we would not have just one lift. And so, but happy that this legislation is for, what, $81,000? No, this will be, the lift is $31,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And $278 is for the lift. And look forward to us getting that lift as soon as possible so that we can continue to make sure that our Fire Division medic unit, units are repaired, so that if they have to be repaired, we have the equipment to do that, so that they can get back into service to be able to provide their, the service to our, our community. So, thank you.
You're welcome. The next ordinance is 1356-2017, and this is to authorize the Department of Finance and Management to allow for an easement for Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc. And this is the replacement of gas lines as part of the Alum Creek Road Widening Project, and it's also to upgrade and replace gas lines that are servicing three of our refuse collection buildings. So this is merely an ordinance to grant them an easement to be able to do the work for us. The next ordinance is 1434-2017, and this is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract to, to purchase organic base performance enhancer beet juice anti-icing with GVM, Inc., in the amount of $1. This is to set up the contract. Unfortunately, on such a beautiful day that we have to talk about purchasing de-icing material, but we, we do hopefully won't need it, but if we do, we have a estimated annual expenditure of $56,000, and that is the primary user of that material is public service.
I certainly appreciate the Department of Public Sa, Public Services willingness to embrace a variety of solutions to keep our roads safe during our winter season. I know we're not hoping for that to come anytime soon, but we'll, we'll be prepared.
We will be prepared.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it'll be just as beautiful then as it is now.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is 1463-2017, and this is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to renew the second-of-four-year contract renewals with Wells Fargo Insurance Service USA, Inc., in the amount of $545,000. Essentially, this ordinance allows us to pay Wells Fargo Insurance for property, general liability, boiler and machinery, and aviation insurance for various buildings, our helicopters, our property, and just general liability on behalf of the city.
Director, can you please just discuss the value of contracting with a vendor to negotiate insurance policies for the city rather than doing it directly ourselves?
Yeah, so we, we think with the, the ability that the city has such a large amount of buildings and equipment, we, we think we get a better price from insurance, plus the lib, you know, the, the cost is, is not on, bared on the taxpayer. It's actually bared on the Wells Fargo, so the city would not have to cover all that cost if something should go bad.
All right, thank you. So we have the ability to save us some dollars if something were to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And this legislation is the second of four potential renewals, and it's for $545,000.
That is correct.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is 1468-2017, and this is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a professional services contract with DLZ Architecture, Inc., to, for the renovation of four elevators at the 1111 East Broad Street Jerry Hammond Center. We have four elevators in the Jerry Hammond Center that are in need of upgrades, and this will be the design of that project. The cost of that will be $200,000, and this will allow all those elevators to not only be enhanced as far as new equipment, but will also bring it up to any current elevator codes that we, we didn't need when we, when we bought the building many years ago.
I know that there are six elevators in the building, but will we have only, I think that four of the elevators are for standard passenger, and then the other two?
My fault, yes.
So will this also include modernization of all six?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. So there's four, there's four passenger elevators, and then there's two other elevators. Yes, this will include all six. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Certainly, we are doing modernization on the elevators. We just passed legislation last night for the courthouse.
Yes.
And now we're looking at this building.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next ordinance is ordinance 1488-2017. This is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to execute a lease agreement with Central Ohio Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio for lease of office space at 1111 East Broad Street Jerry Hammond Center. Essentially, it, currently, we had COIC- Essentially, currently, we had COIC that was in that space. And due to some changes in federal work regulations, that organization had to be split into two entities. One of those entities is the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio, and it was created as a separate entity to provide policy and governance oversight of workforce program delivery. So, they are now occupying that space. So, this is just to create the lease agreement with the new entity. The total revenue that we estimate from the rent will be $330,429.
Thank you. And as Chair of the Workforce Development Committee, certainly, I know that it was a federal change to be able to have, the Workforce Board had to be a separate entity as opposed to the organizations that are responsible for implementing the workforce plans within our community. And so, with that in mind, as you just mentioned, the Workforce Development Board of Central, Workforce Development Board will then, will lease this building. And so, I know Lisa Pratt-McDaniel is now chairing the Workforce Development Board, and I look forward to her and the board's work in making sure that individuals who are underemployed and unemployed, as well as, I know, the relationship we have with the Department of Development, that each of the, all the legislation that we pass in terms of we're looking at any, looking at giving tax incentives to those organizations that they also work with, those organizations that are now, will be within, that the Workforce Development Board has deemed that they should go and work with them to try to look for employees to be able to fill some of those jobs. So, look forward to the work of Lisa Pratt-McDaniel moving our city and our county forward in terms of workforce development.
Yes.
So, thanks.
You're welcome. And the final piece that we have this evening is 1501-2017, and this is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $6,995,000 for general, to general temperature control for HVAC system upgrades at the Columbus Public Health Facility. This ordinance allows for a complete upgrade of the HVAC system at the Health Department. I'm sure my colleague, Dr. Long, is glad to hear that. This would include all HVA. I mean, this is a complete overhaul of the whole system, so the amount of that contract will be, again, $6,995,000.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Do you have any comments on this legislation? I know you've been waiting for it.
I do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This actually is a very major project for us, and I appreciate Director Lombardi and all of his team for realizing, and it's been something that's been planned for, for a long time. But when it's hot, it's really, really, really hot, and it's cold, it's really, really cold, and then sometimes it's the opposite. So, it's a very old building and a large building, so we really appreciate our facilities and management partners helping us to figure it out. So, thank you, Director Lombardi and Director Tyson, Council President Protam Tyson.
Thank you, Dr. Long. And, again, this is for almost $7 million to be able to have this new renovation, this renovation project of the HVAC system in Columbus Public Health. And it's really important because not only is it important to the staff and the team that works there, but that building gets a lot of usage from our residents coming in to gain the services of Columbus Public Health. And so, this is an important building in terms of overall, to provide overall health care to our community, and certainly, having this HVAC upgrade is really important. And the, these upgrades will result in a more precise temperature control, reduced compression, compressor wear, lower energy consumption, and additional dehumidification. And also, that, there'll be a small HVAC system that will be added to your carriage house, which is really important for, which houses staff related to the operation of the Environmental Vector Control Program. So, we're really excited about this for our residents and for the staff. And thank you, Director Lombardi, for moving this forward. You and I have had lots of conversations about making sure that our HVAC systems work. So, whether it's heat or whether it's, we need to be cool that, and we're not having to do it on an emergency basis. So, thank you for your leadership in getting this done.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I hope this afternoon's hearing has provided insight into programs and community initiatives from the Department of Development and from Columbus Public Health as well, and also as finance-related legislation that is necessary to support our ongoing city operations. As residents, these hearings are always an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that are presented. I'd like to thank this evening's presenters. Jennifer Coma, Director of Development and Marketing for the Boy Scouts; Zurka Abid, Executive Director of My Project USA from the Department of Development; Kim Stans from the Human Services Coordinator. I also want to thank Tamela Collins, Senior Director of Advancement for the Hands-on of Central Ohio; and Caroline Holiver, Director of Outreach and Program Management for the New Directions Career Center. I want to thank our Columbus Public Health, Dr. Teresa Long, our Health Commissioner from the City Treasurer's Office; Deborah Cle, our Treasurer from the City Auditor's Office; Robert McDaniel, our Deputy Auditor; and from Finance and Management, last but not least, Joel Lombardi. And then, City Council's Legislative Research Office, especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Offices in Council Chambers; Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee; Alexis Pennell, who staffs the Health and Human Services Committee; then my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams; and the hard-working team at CTV, who make these hearings possible. Always want to thank my council colleagues for their support. And finally, the residents of Columbus, who make our city the best place to live, to work, and to raise a family. And this is America's Opportunity City. Thank you very much, and the hearing is adjourned.